Thanks. And we are now live. Good evening, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, and any other self-defining person. I'm councillor Emmett McKenna, and I am the Chair of the Planning Applications Committee. I would like to welcome you to the Planning Applications Committee, which is again being held as an online meeting, as permitted by the Coronavirus Act 2020. The public and the press can see and hear the meeting by following the link from our website. Agenda papers have been published on the council's website in accordance with our usual practice. To ensure where decisions required, it is clear what has been decided and by whom, members will be asked to vote individually on planning applications, stating if they are for, against, or wish to abstain. To help those observing proceedings to follow the meeting and understand how decisions have been reached, we will be presenting some information on slides as we proceed. Members and officers attending will be asked to introduce themselves. This is for the benefit of the public and also to ensure that all are in attendance as expected and that they can hear and speak to the meeting. To help me manage the meeting, members have been asked to make me aware if they wish to speak on an item in advance. This does not prevent additional contributions being made, but I ask all councillors to notify me when you wish to speak in the chat section of their screens and then wait to be called. This will avoid councillors talking over each other. When not speaking, will councillors please put their microphones on mute? And when called to speak, please unmute your microphone and pause for about three seconds. This is to allow for any slight time delay in connection. I'm aware that we are at the mercy of individuals' broadband services and it is possible that loss of connection may occur. However, as long as we have five members still in the meeting, we will be corit. Tonight, we are intending to have public speakers address the committee for the first time since our meetings moved online. For item eight relating to the application of Westfield Road Recreation Ground, we have an objector and representative of the applicant connected to the meeting by telephone, and I will call on them each to speak at the appropriate moment. In case of any problems with sound or connection, written statements from both parties have already been circulated with the update pack to ensure that their representations can be considered. I will now do a roll call of councillors. As I say your name, could you introduce yourselves to the meeting? I am councillor Emmett McKenna, Chair of the Planning Applications Committee, and I represent Whitby Ward. I will call on the other members of the committee alphabetically. Councillors, please state your name and the ward you represent. Please speak slowly and clearly for the benefit of the record. Councillor Devine, please address the meeting.
I'm Ricky Devine, Lib Dem councillor for Tynehurst Ward.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
Thank you, Chair. I'm councillor John Ennis, councillor for Southcote Ward and also Lead Councillor for Housing Reading Borough Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lovelock?
Hello, I'm councillor Joe Lovelock and I represent Norcot Ward.
Councillor McGowan, who is joining us tonight as a substitute member.
Good evening, everybody. Hi, I'm Ruth McEwan. I'm councillor for Churchward and I'm also Chair of ACE.
Thank you. Is councillor Robinson available? We'll move forward with the roll call and come back. Councillor Rowland, please address the committee.
Yes, hi there. Thank you, Chair. I'm councillor Karen Rowland. I'm a councillor in Abbey Ward and I am also the Lead Member for Culture, Heritage and Recreation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stanford Beale?
Good evening. My name is Jane Stanford Beale and I'm councillor for Peppard Ward and I'm also the Conservative Lead for Strategic Environment, Planning and Transport. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Josh Williams?
Good evening, Chair. Yeah, Josh Williams, Park Ward.
Thank you. And councillor Rose Williams, who is also acting as a substitute to this meeting.
Yes, good evening. It's councillor Rose Williams and I'm a Catesgrove Ward councillor.
So I have noticed in the roll call that councillor Simon Robinson isn't currently in our meeting. At the appropriate point, when he's able to join us, I'll ask him to introduce himself for the record. Thank you, councillors. I would also now like to introduce you to the officers here in attendance tonight. Julie Williams is our Acting Planning Manager. She is our Senior Planning Advisor and is responsible for the work of the planning team. She will also advise me tonight on any matters relating to planning policy, guidance and practice. Richard Etoff is the Development Management Team Leader within the Planning Department. We also have case officers, Matthew Burns, Anthony Scholes and Natalie Weeks, presenting reports on the application this evening. Wendy Badison is a planning solicitor in the council's legal department. She is here to advise me on planning and local government law. This is to ensure that when the committee makes a decision, it is both within its powers and legally signed. Simon Hill and Nikki Simpson are committee services officers. They are taking the minutes of the meeting and producing this live broadcast. With the introductions out of the way, let us now turn to the agenda. For voting on the information items of the meeting in part one of this agenda, I will ask, are we content to proceed? And pause for about five seconds. I will take silence to mean that all members are agreed. We now move to the minutes of our last meeting. These are to be found on pages seven to 10 of the agenda pack. Members, can you confirm that the minutes are correct record of the meeting held on the 24th of June 2020? Thank you. That is now agreed. Turning to declarations of interest, do any members have declaration of interest they wish to bring to the attention of the committee?
Chair, as current Lead Councillor for Housing, I want to declare an interest on the items of 10 and 11. Being the applicant is Reading Borough Council Housing. So I will speak in favour and abstain for transparency. Also, for transparency reasons, although I've been advised that I do not have to declare an interest, is that but for transparency that I was the Lead Member for Education at the time the Heights School was set up. But it's just as a note of transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Rowland, you've also previously indicated?
Yes, thank you, Chair. My role is as Lead Member for Culture, Heritage and Recreation, and I wanted to make that known in reference specifically with agenda item eight, although I do not feel predetermined on that because of that position.
Yeah. Thank you. At this point, with the declarations of interest, we also have to register councillor Iosekala, who is predetermined on agenda item eight and is not joining us on committee tonight. I'll ask if officers have any comments to make on the predeterminations as explained, sorry, the declarations. Thank you. Silence is appropriate and we will now turn next to questions. There are no questions tabled at this meeting, so we move forward. Agenda item four, applications determined by officers using extended delegated powers. Policy Committee on the 27th of April agreed that the Deputy Director of Planning, Transport and Regulatory Services be given extended delegated authority to determine planning applications and tree preservation orders and to have fewer called-in applications to help reduce the number of reports coming to this meeting. Can I ask the planning manager to introduce the report found at page 11, please?
This is me, please, Chair.
Ah, sorry.
Okay. There are no decisions recorded this time in the main agenda, but there is confirmation in your update pack, first item, the application 200639413 Kendrick Road, called in by a number of councillors, was refused planning permission on the 9th of July. That's it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillors, would you wish to address the committee on this matter? I believe councillor Rose Williams, you'd previously indicated, as you'd called in the Silence. We will then move on and note the report. Thank you, councillors. And there we go. Go to speaker. Thank you. If there are no further comments or questions on this matter, and we are in agreement that it should be noted, we move to the next item on our agenda, which is agenda item five, planning appeals. These are provided for members' information at pages 13 to 16 of the agenda pack. Please, can I ask Richard, I believe this time, to introduce the report?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This report shows that we've had two appeals lodged since your last meeting, but there have been no decisions received when we were compiling this report, so there are no information reports for you this time. You're asked to note the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, any comments to make? Then we will note the report and move forward. Thank you. That is agreed. The next procedural matter is agenda item six, applications for prior approval. Developments that qualify for prior approval are submitted to the planning department and are passed automatically, provided they meet the criteria in the regulations. The committee has no power to debate or the applications or change the decisions. I call on planning manager or planning development team leader. Apologies under the script. Please address the committee.
Thank you, Chair. It's me again. This report is a summary version of your previous reports on these types of applications, provides an update on the effect on fee income and affordable housing implications, and provides a simple number table for applications for prior approval received and dealt with since your last meeting. You're just asked to note this report, please.
Thank you. Councillors, do you wish to address the committee on this report? Thank you. Then we'll move forward and we'll move to agenda item seven, which is found at page 21 of your report, changes to general permitted development order. I call on our development team leader, Richard Etoff.
Thank you, Chair. It's going to be me.
Planning manager.
Sorry, bucking you around. Good evening, everybody. Yes, so item number seven is bring to your attention changes to the general permitted development order recently introduced. The report explains how we were consulted last year on changes to permitted development rights, and so the report also explains the background to that. There's two main parts of the general permitted development order being changed at this stage. That's part four, which deals with changes of use or temporary uses of outdoor areas, and also a change to part 12, which is local authority works. So the good news is, we've got no problem with the changes to the outdoor facilities part, and the report explains how that would work. The officer comment on the report is that it seems to be good news that it's been realised for prior approval applications that residential units should be given access to natural light, so that's been introduced as a new criteria for local authorities to consider when dealing with prior approval applications or changed of use to residential. And it gives a bit more detail about how that would work. The other change, and the one that I think most people are interested in, is part 20, which allows existing blocks of flats to be extended upwards for residential purposes. These changes will come into force on the 1st of August this year. So the report gives you a bit more detail on those changes and provides a commentary again on how officers view them. It's clear from the criteria that is set out for prior approval applications officers sought to meet, that there's going to be quite a lot of careful assessment to be carried out by officers. And unusually for prior approval applications, which normally have a very set timescale of dealing within eight weeks, there's no set timescale, so it's open, I suppose it's recognised that dealing with these will take longer, it could take longer than eight weeks, given that we need to consult with quite a few people, residents as well, and also have consultees replies to quite important matters. We still haven't had, and I was hoping we'd have a bit more guidance by tonight, on how this is going to work, and we don't have any guidance yet on what the fee will be. So with that, I can hand over to you and ask you to note the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lovelock, you've indicated you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I won't repeat everything that you've said, but I do actually find the suggestion that two stories can be added to a block of flats through this process. I think it will lead to poor planning in the future, and I really don't understand why the government is so hell-bent on this. It's frankly, developers have always had the right of appeal, local residents who are affected by this do not, and I think it's the right thing in all these situations is to have proper decision process through the local planning authority. And I find it quite astonishing that the government has pushed this through, but I'm not councillor Page. I'm sure if he were here, he said his apologies tonight, he would have a lot more to say on this because he's been following it very closely, but really it is a disgrace. Thank you.
It'll be councillor Josh Williams, followed by councillor Karen Rowland, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I find myself agreeing with councillor Lovelock, and I imagine I'm going to agree with councillor Rowland afterwards as well. I wanted to say a few words. I'm sure councillor Page would have spoken at length, but I'll just say a few. I'm worried about the mantra of build, build, build from Boris is really just setting us up for the slums of the future. And if we begin now, because I think this is part of a suite of wider changes, this won't be it, then we're starting to dismantle the planning system and hand over power to private developers, sorry. And all that's going to do is, as councillor Lovelock says, weaken our democratic oversight. And I think we all know what happens if developers take over. Flats are smaller, flats are more expensive, and nothing is done to address the actual housing crisis here or around the country. I'm sure councillor Ennis would probably chip in as well. Planning authorities like ourselves impose the standards, like energy efficiency standards, open space requirements, that make development sustainable. So the housing crisis is one of affordability, it's a health crisis, it's a fuel poverty crisis, we've got the worst insulated homes in Europe, it's a carbon emissions crisis. And I imagine everyone on the committee agrees, Chair, that these changes and the ones coming are a direct threat to our ability to secure affordable homes, to secure homes that meet the high standards that we want and that everyone in Reading wants. So yeah, I should finish, yeah, I'll finish, sorry, Chair. This government should focus on delivering those affordable, high-quality homes, and they should do that through this local planning process. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Councillor Rowland will be called to speak, followed by councillor Ennis.
Thank you, Chair. Actually councillor Lovelock and councillor Williams did a lovely wrap-up there, also spoke to what my concerns are, obviously. I followed this also on several national organisations that I sit with too, and this is the least bad situation after a lot of lobbying over the past year, that this could have been worse. I mean, this was originally intended to put two stories on top of absolutely anything. So there were initial fears that terraced buildings or terraced houses could have an additional two stories on and on. So this is the least bad situation that we've come up with, but it's still not right. When we remove the possibility for taking a look at development through the planning process and being able to actually get that input from our constituents and from the residents themselves, we are really removing, as councillor Williams said, the democratic process from this whole situation. And I think this is, I think it's a crying shame. I'm glad it is not what it was originally feared to be, but I do not see this as a good thing. So yes, but here we go.
Councillor Ennis, please address the committee.
Yeah, I will. I want to record the points. I think it's really important to do that. It's not just queuing up to have a bash at the government because we're opposition councillors. It's actually to highlight and identify the issues that we have. I mean, there will be a number of residents who are listening in tonight. I mean, planning is one of the more popular meetings that residents want to attend because one, it affects them directly and where they live, and two, it is important to know what's going on in your area. And whilst I don't think the planning process is perfect at the minute, and it's a lot weaker than what it used to be, I really do fear the future is where an area and its residents will have little or no say in what goes up and what the developers have. We get criticised as a council all the time. I see on the media, why have they allowed that? Why have they allowed that? And if you read the brief now, it takes a lot to oppose, it takes a lot to reject an offer on planning terms. And my fear is, it will be nigh on impossible to actually reject or speak against or object to a proposal developers. And as councillor Williams has rightly said, is that affordable housing is something that this town and this country is crying out for more than ever before. Councils up and down the country, be it blue, Tory, yellow Lib Dem or red Labour, need affordable housing, and every council knows that and every council want to do that, but it's very difficult to get developers to get involved in affordable housing. And I fear, as councillor Williams has rightly said, that this going through and further, you know, Mr Johnson's build, build, build means what? It means developers will have a say, a major conclusive say on what gets built, and I worry about the profit motive in planning which will come through, rather than actually building affordable houses. So I share the concerns and want to highlight that to any members of the public that are listening in tonight, how difficult it could be to get some decent planning, get some decent housing for affordability. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ennis. As no further councillors are indicating to speak, I'll make some closing comments for myself, and then I will call upon Julie Williams, our planning manager, if she wishes to address any of the items said by councillors. My view of this, well, there are some elements of permitted development which are appropriate and efficient to run. Top padding, moving from three to five stories on essentially any flat block in the town, without proper controls on it, without proper guidance to explain what the controls are, without a fee being agreed to ensure that the authority is properly resourced, to ensure it's effective, to seeing it coming in in just over two weeks without any guidance in place is just half-baked. It's beyond any terms of poor public management that I could understand. There is no need to rush this. It has been in consultation for a year and is coming in in the absence of the guidance that was supposed to be there to allow people to properly prepare. I'm now going to call Julie Williams, if she wishes to sum up.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Not so much to sum up, but like you awaiting the guidance, I suppose. I've heard members talk about the concerns of neighbours, how would they have their views taken on board, how can we influence it? The criteria they set for these type of applications, they are required, the applicant is required to consult the neighbours, where required to consult the neighbours and adjacent buildings. So I don't know what expectations that will set up for those consultees, like what comment can they make that could prevent the scheme going ahead. We're also required to look at the external appearance of these buildings, and again, there's no guidance on what that actually means. You know, it's how far can we go in saying we don't think it's appropriate in terms of the context and the setting, et cetera. So it may well be that there will be some situations where we will be able to refuse these applications. The legislation is quite clear, there isn't enough natural light to these new dwellings, we can refuse them. And we still have the emphasis on good design in the national planning guidance, so we could still rely on that. But at this stage, without the guidance as to how we can interpret some of the criteria, it does make it very difficult for us to give you any comfort on how far we can control what comes to us or how we can determine it. But as soon as we get that guidance, of course, we will share it with you.
Thank you. Yes, it still doesn't change my opinion that this is half-baked, and I truly hope they rush it through the oven very quickly because the deadline is fast approaching. Councillors, are there any further comments to make on this item? Then we shall move forward and note the report. Before we move to agenda item eight, I'm going to ask councillor Robinson to introduce himself to the committee. Councillor Robinson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Apologies for my late arrival on the call. I was on another call, so apologies for that. But yeah, councillor Simon Robinson, representing Peppard Ward.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. Apologies, perfectly accepted. We now move to the main items of our agenda, which are actually the matters for us to decide upon this evening. And what's my place? Two seconds, please bear with me. As mentioned in my introduction to this meeting, to help councillors and managing this event, councillors have been asked to advise me in advance, should they wish to speak to this item. I've had some representations which I will place into the chat box for our councillors following us at the appropriate points for the committee to speak. However, we will have some public speaking on this item, and the officer will make an introduction. After the planning officer has presented a report, we will move to an objector who will be asked to speak to this. And I'll now please call the officer to introduce the item.
Thank you, Chair. I will be introducing items eight and nine together, which both relate to the Heights Temporary School in Cabbageham. Please note that there is an update report to each item within the update pack. Application 20564 seeks retention of the temporary school site and two two-story modular classroom buildings for a further 12-month period until the 31st of August 2021, whilst item eight, application 20512, seeks retention of a fenced-off area of Westfield Road playing fields for use as a playground by the temporary school, also until the 31st of August 2021. The site plan on slide one indicates the location of the The site plan on slide one indicates the location of the school site, the two temporary buildings and the fenced-off area of the playing fields. Permission was first granted for the temporary school on the site in 2014, and in 2018, temporary permission was given to add the second building to the site, as well as to provide the fenced-off area of the playing fields, to provide a playground for the school. The existing temporary permissions for both the school site and the area of playing field expire on the 31st of August 2020. Planning permission is sought to retain both the school buildings and the fenced-off area of the playing fields for a further 12-month period until August 2021. This is because the replacement permanent school that is under construction at Maple Durham playing fields is not yet ready for occupation. The permanent school is estimated for completion at the end of May 2021. The photographs on slide two show the two modular school buildings that are proposed to be retained under application 20564. The officer recommendation for this application on the main agenda report was subject to outstanding flooding matters and an objection from the Environment Agency being resolved. As set out in the update report for this item, this matter has now been resolved and the EEA have withdrawn their objection, subject to recommended conditions. The application seeks to retain the site and the buildings as existing and does not propose to add any additional structures or uses to the site. As set out in the main agenda report, the principle of provision and retention of school accommodation is considered to accord with national and local policies, and the officer recommendation is to grant a further temporary planning permission for the school site until the 31st of August 2021, subject to the recommended conditions. The conditions include a requirement for all the buildings and structures to be removed by August 2021, and a requirement for a scheme for reinstatement of the land to be submitted and agreed by the planning authority. Slide three shows the fenced-off area of Westfield Road playing fields that is sought to be retained under item eight and application 20512. So the slide shows a view from Gosbrook Road. Similar to the proposed retention of the school buildings, the application seeks to retain the fenced-off area as existing and does not propose to add any additional structures or uses to the land. The update report for this item sets out additional information from the school about this, how this area of land is used, and also includes details of an additional objection. As set out in the main agenda report, and as established when planning permission was first granted to provide the fenced-off area, the loss of the area of public open space for use by the school does present conflict with policy EN7, local green space and public open space of the local plan. The policy seeks to prevent loss of these spaces or development that would jeopardise the use or enjoyment of such spaces by the public. However, given the proposed continued use of the space is temporary, officers are of the opinion that, subject to conditions to secure removal of all the structures, full reinstatement of the land upon expiry of the temporary period, and that the land remains available for public use outside of the school hours, then the harm caused by retention of the fenced-off area for a further 12 months is outweighed by the need to retain for the school to continue on the site for this temporary period. Therefore, the officer recommendation for this application is also to grant a further temporary planning permission for a further 12-month period until the 31st of August 2021, subject to the recommended conditions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I will now ask our public speakers to present their statements regarding, starting with the objector, Dr Vogler. You will have five minutes to present your submission. Can you please introduce yourself to the committee? I will let you know when your time is nearly up and you may be asked questions from councillors at the end. Please press star six to unmute yourself and begin when you're ready with your introduction.
Thank you. We find ourselves objecting yet again to this annexation, even though-
Dr Vogler, can you please introduce yourself to the committee so that we have it for the record?
Yes, Dr Alex Vogler, I'm a local resident and a member of the Westfield Park.
Thank you. And you now have five minutes.
Thank you. We find ourselves objecting yet again to this annexation, even though the applicant promised they would not require an extension, joking that they were likely to leave ahead of schedule. Countless other claims made by the applicant in 2018 have not borne truth in reality. It is with the benefit of hindsight with regards to usage and behaviour that we hope you will make a judgement on this latest extension. They said, and I quote, "The proposed enclosure is critical to the functionality of the school." The worst case is, of course, that the school can't cope, and that would become evident when pupil numbers seriously increase. The future of the school depends on you approving this planning application. They went on to justify why other options such as the use of Christchurch Meadows and the use of Westfield Park with no offence were not viable by stating safeguarding as a key concern. This is the reality. They do not use Westfield Park for every break or and or lunchtime. For about four months each winter, they overuse the land so it becomes so muddy it is impossible for use by the school and the community as well. It is inaccessible in its totality from mid-October to the end of February. The school does cope. They use a vast variety of other spaces, including sand and playing fields, their own playground, the tarmac area of Westfield Park, the unfenced area of Westfield Park, Christchurch Fields and the tennis courts, something you were led to believe in 2018 couldn't happen. They also use plenty of unfenced spaces for sports, for clubs, for shade, for netball practice. They spill out all over the park, sometimes leaving the fenced area empty, often playing by the side of a busy road, often in reach of dogs off-leash, all things they told you they couldn't do in 2018. You have seen photographic evidence submitted, and this was also witnessed during a site visit by councillor Rowland and Mr Sainsby, where the Heights elected to use Christchurch Meadows rather than the fenced area crossing without using the Pelican Crosses. This demonstrates that even when they have sole use of the space, they frequently choose to use other spaces. It also under undermines any emotive argument for their need of the fenced area based on safeguarding, as they seem to pick and choose when this applies. No one could foresee COVID-19 and the increased need for everyone to have access to open space in which to safely socialise, exercise and relax for health benefits. We see increased numbers enjoying the park, sitting everywhere except the fenced area. The fences stay out, and that's exactly what people do. Current guidance for the from the Department of Education is that they do not expect primary-aged children to socially socially distance. The greater need sits firmly with the general public, who are the socio-economic demographic at increased risk of COVID-related complications. Families most likely live in in flats and small terraces. They will also lead you to believe that there is little objection to this application, as the private company they employed received no objection. Residents didn't know who this company was. Why send objections to them when residents recognise RBC as the planning authority, not some privately paid property consultant? We don't have the benefit of a consultant and must navigate complexities of this case by ourselves, as a small community made up of the elderly, families, dependents, people who feel a passionate love for Reading's parks. We believe we are not alone. We have seen a great outpouring of love for the Reading's parks, and we want you as a council to reflect that love and respect in your decision today. Shockingly, the Chair of Governors has even censored and intimidated us. He succeeded in having a direct quote made on record by the applicant, edited from our objection letter. He emailed us a letter of intimidation to our personal email address on a Friday evening. How is a planning applicant allowed to behave in such a bullyboy way? This is, this is this the act of a community-minded school? They have never once hosted or attended a community meeting about the annexation of this shared space. Why accept increased pupils to school struggling with space? Does this mean they deserve more public green space as a result of their own decisions? No. The fundamental arguments set out by the applicant in 2018, which you took in good faith in your decision-making process, are simply not the reality. All we ask is for you to consider the facts with the benefit of hindsight, not the wishes and demands of this school. It is no coincidence that they have waited until the final week's term to have this application heard, did not feel the pressure of their timescales as these are self-orchestrated. Please ask, does the school need this space to survive? I think you will agree, they have shown this is a want, but certainly not a need. It is about time the school gave something back to our community rather than take, take, take. I'm happy to take any questions as well now.
Thank you. You're perfectly to time.
Excellent.
Councillors, do you have any questions to ask of Dr Vogler? As I have no one indicating to ask you a question, ah, sorry, councillor Rowland, please ask your question.
Councillor Rowland, you're muted. My apologies. Thank you. Thank you, Dr Vogler, for for your statement. Can you describe for for the members this evening what the situation is with the ground in the triangle section that is fenced off and why that ground, you believe, looks like that? And if you could describe it in detail, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you. I mean, when you go into that area, after the winter use especially, it is basically quagmire, and then it does not recover, it hasn't recovered for the last two years because it's constantly used. So there's divots in there, there's exposed bits of tree that the kids have dug up, there's puddles everywhere, and then in the summer it turns into a dust ball. And when we spoke to the parks manager, he said it's going to take months and months to put this right and once they leave. So it's not a case of at the end of October, you know, in August, sorry, that, you know, the park comes back to us. It may need to be still fenced so it can recover for months and months after this. Yeah, and, yeah, not even a footprint in there in winter.
Thank you.
In the winter, right.
Thank you. Councillors, do we have any further questions? As I have no further indications, I'd like to thank you, Dr Vogler, for addressing the committee. We will now put you back on mute, but you can remain on the call until the end of this item. Thank you. Can I now call Ian Leach from the Department of Education, representing the applicant, to speak on this item? Please press star six to unmute yourself and begin when you're ready. You will likewise have five minutes. We can't currently hear you. Can an officer help me as to the indication of the phone number?
Yes, Chair, looks like the number is still in the meeting. So if we just remind him to press star six and hopefully that'll unmute.
Thank you. Please press star six. This is rather unfortunate. As we have a number of representatives from the applicant, would someone wish to take the place of Ian Leach, who cannot address the committee? Can you press star six and introduce yourself to the committee?
Hello, Chairman. My name's Tom Lamzett from JLL, and I'd be happy to speak on Ian Leach's behalf, given that he can't speak tonight.
Thank you. That would be most appreciated. I will have you introduce yourself and maybe a little bit flexible about the time. Do you need a couple of moments to compose yourself, or can we proceed?
No, that's 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 fine. I can proceed. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you. Then I'll ask you to introduce yourself formally for the record, and then you'll have five minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tom Lamzett, and I'm a planning adviser for JLL, representing the applicant. The proposed application is required in order to provide vital external play space for the Heights Primary School for a temporary period only. The proposal is to allow the school to continue to use an area of Westfield Recreation Ground for educational purposes during school hours only for one further academic year until the 31st of August 2021, by which time the school's permanent home will have been constructed at Maple Durham playing fields. As members are aware, the temporary school site is heavily constrained and there is limited space for external play. Even with the area of Westfield Park the subject of this planning application, the levels of play space for the school are still below that recommended under government guidance. The outside space subject to the application is therefore vital to allow primary pupils external play for next academic year. The site would only be used during school hours, 10:40 to 3:30pm from Monday to Friday, remaining free for community use at all other times, continuing the existing arrangement. On the school's full return to the site in September, there will understandably be an increased emphasis on the health and wellbeing of pupils, re-emphasising the value of this space for pupils. The pandemic has also increased the importance of external space for schools. The proximity of the space to the temporary school buildings is essential. It's already unviable to you to staff use of outdoor space further afield. Staffing profiles and numbers for the year ahead may well be impacted by COVID-19, making scape for walking to other venues for outside social activities or sport even more limited. This is a key part of the national curriculum. It should also be highlighted that the school has a relatively high proportion of pupils with special educational needs. The fenced-off area of the park is therefore important to ensure these pupils can appropriately be looked after and kept safe with suitable staffing ratios. The point has been made that the space is underused and extremely muddy. This is down to the combination of the very wet autumn and winter we've had and the fact the area is up until the wet weather being used heavily by the school. When the area was not able to be used, the children were unable to have an outdoor break time. The area has seen limited use more recently due to required closure from March of the school for most pupils as a result of the coronavirus outbreak. As the committee report notes, the application has been supported by the council's lead member for education, raising the point that the frustrations of local residents of how long the fence has been in place are shared by the school. The applicant team are doing all they can to ensure the permanent site opens as soon as possible and that the fence can be removed and that part of the park returned to its previous condition. On the latter point, once the school relocates, the land will be grassed and reinstated and fencing removed. Suggested planning condition will ensure officers have control over this reinstatement. In relation to transport impacts and relation to the temporary school, highways officers raise no objection. The school has achieved star, most ship gold accreditation for its travel plan. The applicant team has undertaken comprehensive consultation with residents and businesses with over 1,000 properties consulted before the application was submitted. Leaflets are also attached to lamp posts around the site, and the applicant has worked with officers pre-application stage to ensure a comprehensive application was prepared. The existing temporary permission expired in August this year, and the current application will allow the school's use of the park to continue for a further temporary period until the school's permanent home is constructed. The appointed contractor is progressing well on the permanent site, which is well on course to be completed by summer 21. The school is very much looking forward to their new accommodation. The proposals are in accordance with national policy and the council's adopted development plan, and we would respectfully urge members to approve the application in line with the planning officer's recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. And as we now have a number of other people from the applicant, and before I call any councillors to speak, I'm going to ask all of you to unmute yourself, pressing star six. It may be slightly more difficult to manage this debate, but if you feel you are the appropriate person to answer on the question, please introduce yourself to the committee at that point. Thank you. We're going to start with questions from councillors. The questions from councillors are in the order of councillor Ennis, councillor- councillor Lovelock, councillor Stamford Bill and then councillor Devine currently. Councillor Ennis, please ask your question.
I do, I have, I have a couple, if that's all right, I try not to make a statement too much. The first question is, is, I think it's all linked. Do you share the frustration of the residents, this is a DFE? Do you share the frustration of the residents that they were told that this would be two years and most in the planning committee? Because the council has no power over building this school. This is a DFE school, part of the national process where local government had no power or control over the timescale. Just want to put it in there that we built schools and they're in two or three years now at the same time as this, I thought I'd put that out there. But do you share the frustration and the lack of confidence in the day of August 2021? Because if we do agree this, how confident are you that, that the school will be built and they'll be off this field by August 2021? That's my question. I'll make some comments later, if that's okay, Chair, thank you.
Shall I answer?
Yes, please, thank you.
I'll keep the camera on, I might want to come back.
Yes, please, councillor Ennis.
Okay. In terms of an update on the permanent build, I don't know if you've been out to the site at Maple Durham Playing Fields lately, but we have completed the foundation works and the steel frame is in the process of going in. And despite the pandemic, we remain on program. So that, that is good news. There have been delays around the scheme undoubtedly and that is regrettable. Much of that relates, as you know, to the controversy around the acquisition of the site. Fortunately, that is now behind us and we are progressing with the build. It is on program. The school and the Department for Education and the contractor, KIR, are all extremely motivated to complete that build to that timeline. And we are aware of the impact the temporary accommodation is having both on the residents, but also on the staff, the head teacher, the parents and the children in that accommodation. And we are extremely motivated to make that deadline.
Can I, can I say, can I come back, if that's all right, Chair?
Yes, please.
That's helpful to hear that, but can you, so it's not 100% then, is it? I'm, I'm trying to be honest, it's not 100% certain that you might have to come back. Because I want to be honest, I want to be honest with loads of residents who are listening in. Because we all want the school built and we all want the children to, to have the school, it's so important. But can you see the predicament is that it's not 100% sure that you might not have to come back next year to say that we want it further? Is that date actually written in stone that you can do that or is it, is that not right? Is that not the case?
It's in our contracts with, with any build and you're talking, of course, in the middle of the pandemic.
Absolutely.
We're not, I'm not going to be able to sit here and perceive the future. But what I can tell you is the foundations are in, the steel frame is in, the contract has that completion date. Governors, head teacher, Department for Education are extremely motivated to make that deadline and we are working as hard and as flat out as we can. I cannot give you 100% because I cannot see the future, but that is where we are at and that is our honest motivation.
And can you understand the frustrations of the residents, you know, spoken by the doctor, he, he represents many, can you see their, their real frustrations with this situation?
I do, and it's been a stressful situation for all. And, you know, we recognise that and we remain extremely motivated to get off that site. And I know the school trusts equally share that frustration and motivation to get off that site. What we're asking for here is some external play space for the children who are coming back in September and will need some outside space to function as a school and just to get us through whilst we complete the permanent build. Understand the frustration on all sides, but this is a pragmatic solution to get us through this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lovelock, please ask any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chair. It's really a question to ask and I don't know whether it's more appropriate for the head teacher, I think perhaps he's there somewhere as well. But why, what happens over the next year, particularly during the autumn and spring terms, when we might have yet another very wet winter? What happens if that field becomes even more of a mud bath and is unusable by the pupils? I understand from what's been said that in, in, when that happened last winter, people were taken to nearby open spaces, Christchurch fields and so on. But obviously it's more difficult now we've got COVID-19 around. So what will happen if that mud bath exists over the winter months? What will happen to those children who, who would otherwise need to use that space? And how will that be planned, especially with the added complication of, of COVID-19?
It's Karen Edwards here, the head teacher, I think I'm probably best placed to answer that question, if that's all right?
Yes, please, thank you.
Firstly, if, if I could clarify the use of Christchurch Meadows and the tennis courts. We've only taken our children from key stage two over for some of their PE lessons. We haven't taken any of our children over there for the break and lunchtime. And that's what we made clear a couple of years ago, that actually that recreation space was, was going to be needed for a very significant number of children in the break, the, the morning break and the lunchtimes. And if we could also use it for PE, we would be, which we did in the first year and recognised that the footfall was so significant that we needed to preserve that as much as possible for the breaks and lunches where we needed larger numbers of people to be on it at any one time. So we don't take the younger children across the road, we don't take anyone across the road for any break or lunchtime, so just for their set PE lesson. I'd also like to clarify something that Dr Vogler said, he said that we, I believe it was Dr Vogler, that we were using or able to use St Anne's Field. We don't use St Anne's Field and they've been incredibly kind of generous. We use St Anne's Field for some of our reception and year one PE lessons, but not for our break and lunchtime, which clash. We have similar break and lunchtime. So I just wanted to clarify both of those points and the, the fence off area in the park has been needed most of all, as I've already said, for significant numbers of children to be out at break and lunchtime. Now, yes, we had an incredibly wet autumn, unprecedented, and it meant that, that there were longer periods, quite an extended period of time where we weren't able to physically get the children out there. We didn't use St Anne's Field, the children were either squashed together on an even more rote basis within our school site. Our accident and injury book, I could show you the logs of the increased number of accidents that the children had with a limited number of space. Their, their outdoor break time was cut down significantly. They did not have the same amount of time as other children in those times to be outside because we couldn't facilitate them having that space. And in fact, this coming year, in from September, with our school moving to two-year-six classes rather than the one, we have two-year-five classes moving up. The, the small indoor key stage two hall area that we were able to have some packed lunches and a bit of space in has now, is now being made into a key stage two year six classroom, so we will have even less space. So in terms of planning, we, we don't have a firm plan as yet for the late autumn months. We are hoping to be able to be outside as we have been during COVID and we didn't close at the school. And of course, since we've been back, we've been back in Westfield Park every day for a significant part of the day because we are having to rotate the children even more carefully now to, to manage the different bubbles that are on that space. I'd also like to, to, to say that actually the children, if they have been outside of the fenced-off area, the only time that happened was when a performance sports coaching group who are away from the school and are not employed by the school, they ran sessions and they had 18 children or 12 children, 12 to 18 children with three members of staff outside the tent. We do not have the staff to manage the kind of ratios that we would need if we were not to have an area that was fenced off. I don't know if that, that answers your question well enough.
Yes, thank you, that's, that's helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Lovelock, do you have any follow-up questions or maybe move forward to the next councillor?
Councillor Ennis asked my other question.
Thank you. Councillor Stamford Bill, please ask your question of committee.
Thank you, Chairman, I've got two questions. The first one is to the DFE. So we've got years delay, you've told us that you've done the groundwork, you've got the foundations in, the steel frames going up, but it's still going to take another year. It's only a school, it's not a very big school at that, why is it taking such a long time to get this build done? We, as councillor Ennis says, you know, we had an emergency where we had a big rise in the birth rate and we had to put a lot of classrooms into a lot of schools and we built some other schools as well. Hampshire County Council managed the builds for us and, you know, they, they arrived on time. And we've got some really good schools in Reading now, but this one is, is dragging on and on and on. Second question, you know, is it possible, when my children went to school, they were on a hard playground, they didn't go on, on the field unless, unless the weather was extremely good, otherwise they were out on the hard playground. Most of the year they're on the hard playground, so why do these children, children need to go onto grass? And could you actually stagger it? So you have, you know, key stage one out and then later on you have key stage two out. So you manage your space better like that rather than having all the children out for break at the same time and all the children out for lunchtime at the same time? Thank you.
If councillor Stamford Bill is agreeable, I propose that someone from the DFE speaks first on the build and then we'll call someone from the school to speak about the management of the children. Would that be appropriate, councillor Stamford Bill?
Thank you, yep.
DFE first, who wishes to answer the first question?
Hi, my name's Chris Watson, I'm the DFE project manager for, for the Heights Primary School. The build for the Heights Primary School is taking longer than a normal standard primary school, purely down to the ground conditions we've encountered on the site. The site has been underlaid by a large number of solution features in the chalk, which is unique to that location. And we have spent a long time injecting grout into the ground to stabilise it, to form a firm foundation to build the school on. Once we're out of the ground, the site will progress in the same program as any other standard primary school. So we're not, we're not unduly delaying, we're proceeding at all, all speed. Sorry, there has been a slight delay due to COVID-19 restrictions, but, but hopefully we're drawing out of that period. And so we are proceeding all, all speed ahead to get this school built.
Thank you. And now someone from the school, that face qualified, answer the question.
Yes, it's Karen Edwards again, the head teacher. So I, I think I mentioned previously that we already do stagger our break and lunchtime quite significantly. So they, key stage one and key stage two have very different times. So we, we've already managed a staggered timing there or system of breaks. But we have extremely limited hard space on our school site. So it isn't as if we, we just have a hard space playground that the 358 children can be on a rotor to play on. And that's one of the reasons why for our key stage two PE lessons, we do the 10-minute walk to Christchurch Meadows Tennis Courts so that they can during those winter months have a PE lesson, actually in a space that's large enough for them to meet the, the demands and needs of, of a PE curriculum. But we all, but the both sides are part of those questions. One, we already do rotate and two, we have a very, very limited amount of space. We don't actually have a, a sort of flat hard playground in our current temporary site.
Thank you. Councillor Stamford Bill, do you have any further questions or should I move to the next councillor?
No, thank you, move to the next councillor.
Thank you. Councillor Devine, please ask your question.
It's okay, the, the answer was given in the answer to councillor Lovelock's question, so I, I don't need to ask anything further.
Thank you, councillor Devine. Councillor Rowland, please ask your questions.
Thank you, Chair, and I'm going to ask probably that Karen Edwards actually rephrased something because I missed, I missed a portion of what you said and I, I saw, I'm going to have to re-ask for my own clarity. The, the first one is for the, the DFE. Just in, in response to COVID-19, I have had it suggested several times that you are, and maybe it isn't the right, right party to ask, but I, I believe it is, that, that the DFE is recommending that there are more outdoor courses and supposedly that is in response to COVID-19. Is that correct? So that's, that's one thing. And is there an actual guidance for that? Is there a requirement for students to be, to be out in, in the out-of-doors for additional classwork? And probably just for air and, and all of that to reduce, reduce the impact of COVID-19? So that's one question. The second question that I had is, is more for Karen Edwards, if she wouldn't mind addressing specifically. How did you manage during the months that you were not able to use that fenced-in area? What did that look like for students? If you could describe that to me in, in detail, when you didn't have that as an option? How did it look? What was the impact? In, in any kind of manner you could describe that. The second question that I would have, and this is the part where I missed your comments, Miss Edwards. You were saying something about the requirement really to have that fence there and why you couldn't function without that fence. So what I'm asking you is, is there is that outdoor area of that park? If that fence were not there, would that be the end of the world? And what is the real reason you need that fence there? So if you could justify that for me, and I believe that summarises my questions, thanks.
Thank you, councillor Rowland. Who wishes to speak first?
I can probably, all three, unless Sharon you'd like to answer the first one?
No, you plow on, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, government guidance does recommend that during COVID and, and sort of continuing on, that children have as much time outside as possible and that they have different lessons and classes outside as well. And I think schools around the country are trying to facilitate that. Certainly we have been since our return. Our reception classes in particular have spent the vast majority of this term since their return outside, including eating their lunch outside. So hopefully that answers that part of the question. You asked what it was like in the autumn, it was incredibly challenging. We face challenges all the time as a school that remains on the temporary sites. And I know that the impact on other people is also very challenging for which it's really regretful. But having so many children squashed into an area and, and even rotoring them as much as we can with the staff and the, the support that we've got, as I've said already, our injury logbooks, the injuries, the head bumps, the bruises, the, the falling over were, were much, much higher. The anxiety levels of the children were much higher, particularly those who were, who were more vulnerable. There's no getting away from the noise, there's no getting away from, from other children and we had no space other indoors or outdoors for them to retire to. And so that led to some very challenging behaviours from some of our children who aren't able to, to manage their, their behaviour in, in such an environment. So I hope that, that answers that question. We, we survived it, but I wouldn't say that it's, it was an experience that facilitated or enabled any of our children to really thrive, which is of course what, what we're all aspiring for. And in terms of the fenced-off area in the park, we've, we've mentioned this a number of times. We have a number, significant numbers of children with additional needs in our school, much higher than the vast majority of other Reading schools. They are vulnerable, they do require greater They are vulnerable. They do require greater levels of supervision. And we have noticed that before the fence was was put up and when our children were using the park for some of the PE lessons, there were understandably playful dogs that might run sort of straight across in front of them. There were members of the public who would cut straight across the sort of class that was being held in a coned off area. And at one point, there were quad bikes as well, which was probably the most alarming. And that was just over two years ago. So actually, being able to safeguard the children without that fence would be incredibly challenging, would require a huge volume of adult support that we don't have access to. But even with that adult support, there are still real vulnerabilities of them not being enclosed in a space. I hope that answers those questions, Counselor Roland.
Yes.
Thank you. And Counselor Roland, do you have any further questions to ask?
Yes, I do, Chair. And and I'm sorry about that, but Ms Edwards, could you describe to me exactly or in as clear a detail as you can, how how when the students come back in September, life is going to change for your classes and for for the structure? I mean, talking about bubbles or or how classes are going to have to be broken up. It sounds like it might be more of a challenge to me than it was last year. But but could you try to describe that to me and then also try to describe for me how this particular outdoor fenced area would benefit that? And so if you could compare and contrast before and after, that would be very helpful.
Well, I think what we've been putting in place since the children returned. And as I said before, we didn't we didn't close. We've remained open for children as key worker with parents. But over the last six to eight weeks, we've had up to a third of our school back with staggered starts and finishes and breaks. And as I mentioned before, we've been using the fenced off area in the park very heavily for the bubbles that we have. So we have key worker bubbles and we've had class bubbles. And the children play outside in those bubble areas. So we have sort of three almost marked off areas within the fenced off area in the park that specific groups of children remain in when they're outside. They're still within their bubble. There may be times they're not to two metres, but they're outside where we know the transmission is really low. And that's how we've been able to manage that. And I'm delighted that over the past, you know, 14 weeks, we've, you know, we've not had a positive case amongst the staff or the children, which is fabulous. And long may that continue everywhere. And that is the kind of model that we've we've set up and trialled over this summer term. It's one that we would be looking to continue to use when we come back in September. And we are aiming for all the children to come back, but they will need to be having their break and lunchtime as a year group bubble, a bubble of two classes of 50 children, and still trying to keep them as separate as possible when they are outside. So excuse me, not just for break and for lunch, but for their PE sessions, for outdoor art, for, you know, different learning outside the classroom activities. There's a whole scope of different things that the children can do outside. Does that answer your question?
Okay. Counselor Roland, you're on mute.
Sorry. Yes, it does. Thank you. Chair, could you possibly indulge me for one more question to, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Please do.
I think that the DFE and the school understands very well that that there is an incredible amount of upset in the in the area about about the park and about this fence. And obviously, why I think we're all being so careful with our questioning tonight. I think part of that has come from from wherein I think the residents have some kind of sense that 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 the school has not perhaps worked as hard to to meet everything halfway and has been as amenable as as they possibly could. I think we have to understand that and accept that because on a great level, they've they've had a portion of their park removed and and a kind of way of life. If I could ask the DFE or the school to address and or to think of any kind of mitigation that might have been done, that could have been done, or that that if we were to grant this this evening could still be done towards the neighbourhood there, could that please be vocalised now? And please don't necessarily vocalise it to myself, but instead vocalise it to the neighbours and to the residents. Because I think they're the ones that are at the bottom of this very rung in this whole very difficult situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone from the applicant wish to address Counselor Roland's question?
Sharon McHale here from the Department for Education. You know, I I recognise the impact that the temporary school has had on on the residents there. And I know the school and the trust and the governors, you know, recognise that as well. And, you know, we have been on site longer than our intention. And, you know, we realise that that has had an impact on residents. We do. We are very focused on getting off that site. And the position is different this time round because we have the permanent site acquired. We have the foundations in. We are putting the steel work up. We are exiting that site. We are full on focused on that now. In terms of the space from the park, I fully appreciate it's a very sensitive issue. Parks are precious things. But outdoor space is is very much needed by the school. And the mitigation here is that the school is very concerned that the public still have access to it in the evenings and at weekends. We've been sensitive in the type of fencing that we've put up so as to be as unobtrusive as we can. And, you know, this is an offsted outstanding school providing an excellent education for children. We're not a big developer, you know. We we build schools for children and they need some outside space. And I recognise those tensions here. I recognise we've been here longer than we intended. But this is a temporary measure. We do have an exit strategy. And we are making good progress now on that permanent build.
Can I can I add something as well?
Please do.
We do feel very passionate about working in and for and with a community. And we know that we're outside of our catchment area and what our our community up at the heights will be. But we have engaged in a number of things locally. We have worked both by ourselves and with one of our sister schools to do different litter picks across the community in Westhill Park, across in Christchurch Meadows and Tetherfield and on St Anne's Field. We've done that a number of times. That's quite a regular thing. There were two trees that have been planted immediately outside the front entrance of our school, which we agreed when a tree was removed for the tarmac in the certain area, which the school donated and they're in really strong and fine condition at the moment as they grow. We have worked incredibly hard to gain our Gold Mode Shift Star Award, which is about sustainable travel to and from school. One of our parents leads the bike ability throughout the local area and we're campaigning hard for different cycle paths. A significant number of our children walk, cycle or scooter a mile and a half, two miles from where they may live catchment wise to the school. There isn't a single school in Reading that's got a bronze award currently, let alone a silver or a gold. And I think that that shows a really deep commitment that we feel is right to sustainable travel. So some of the things, and we have passed those that information on to the local ward councillor so that that can be shared, the kind of things that we've been doing. And whilst some of that might not be really, really obvious and noticeable to everyone, I just wanted to point out that, you know, there are lots of things that we do. And we do raise a lot of money as well for different local charities that we feel really passionate about. So I think that those are the sort of things that perhaps people don't answer where that we do as a school. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Roland, any further questions?
No, Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My apologies.
No apologies necessary. It's an important item. I have no further indications of questions in the chat box. Do you have any further questions, councillors, before I address a couple of my questions? So I've got a couple of questions more about the build process. What is the handover, the anticipated handover date to the school? And how developed are the remedial action plans to restore the site should you be granted the extension? Is anyone available to answer those questions?
Chris, are you best placed to set out the handover date?
I didn't catch the first question. Sorry. Could that be repeated?
The question is, what is the anticipated handover date to the school? I.e. the end of the build process to then go on to the snagging list?
The contract completion date for the main main site is 19th of April. Due to COVID-19, we're running two weeks behind. So that's why we've been quoting a May date. We I we have, I understand, although I haven't seen it recently, we have plans to reinstate the the fenced off area field to its original condition. Those are, that is, I don't know that we have contracted engagement for that yet, but we can find that out.
Perhaps I could just step in it. Tom Lam said here from JLL again, Chris and Chairman. Yes, we've had a reinstatement plan prepared in draft. We're discussing that with officers to make sure it's acceptable in the event that permission is granted tonight so we can move ahead with discharging relevant conditions on that aspect.
Thank you. And yes, the handover date has to somewhat helped me slightly because if the handover date had been the 30th of August, that might be in a different place. Thank you. Do any councillors have any further questions? Okay. I'm now going to ask the various speakers of the applicant to mute their microphones. And then we can move to the opening of the general debate on this item. You'll of course be able to listen in. Thank you. I believe all are muted. I'm going to now call Cawsham Ward councillor, Richard Davis, who is asked to address the committee on this this application. We will unfortunately not be able to ask any questions of Counselor Davis. Counselor Davis, could you please introduce yourself for the record and then you will have no time limit?
Good evening, committee. Good evening, members of the public and applicant objectors. I am Richard Davis. I represent Cawsham Ward on Reading Borough Council. Before we start, I have my connections dropped out a couple of times during the the meeting, only briefly. So if it does drop out, I'm very likely to come back on very quickly. So if you could, if that does happen, please bear with me. It'll be during a rhetorical flourish, no doubt. That's the way life is. Firstly, a couple of points I want to make, preliminary points. Firstly, I'm here, I'm also representing the other two ward councillors in Cawsham Ward, so we have conferred on this. And I want to make it clear, we all do agree. So it's not me because I'm going out on a limb. I'm representing their views as well. And secondly, what I want to say is that I have always supported this school generally. It's been in our ward now for six years, I think. And it's made during that time in through really difficult circumstances, some of which have not have been its own making. It has made a really valuable contribution to education in Reading and particularly north of the river. It's achieved an excellent offsted rating. And despite the constraints on it and the the Mode Shift Stars Award is to be commended because it's extremely difficult, I imagine, to move 350 students in and out of that site with absolutely no parking every day. Not never, notwithstanding the fact that the residents do experience some disruption, it only takes a small proportion of those residents, of those parents to to cause disruption. But on the whole, I know that the school have made efforts to get the kids in and out of that in a sustainable way. So I want to want to make sure I say that. That said, I cannot support the continuation of the fence on the park. And I'm going to proceed to explain why. Some of the points, my points have been made by Dr Vugler. But what I'm going to, well, I don't want to rehash the debate we had two years ago because that wasn't persuasive clearly to the committee, you know. We didn't manage to persuade the committee then. But it's two years down the line. And in those two years, we have learned a great deal about the pattern of usage of the field, the impact on the park itself, the way the school's operated. So, you know, then we were kind of, there were some predictions. Now we have some some actual evidence. And I'd rather focus on what what's changed and what we've learned. So I'll start with just talking about, oh, the other thing I want to say is that, you know, there has been a lot of tension in the community, between the community and the school. And I really don't want to condone, and I want to make it totally clear, me and the other councillors, we do not condone. In fact, we condemn any kind of hostility or intimidation by anyone of anyone. So, you know, let's have this discussion, this debate in a civilised, moderate, moderate manner. And I'll try and proceed in that on that basis. So I think I've got three issues altogether. The first one I want to talk about perhaps is a couple of points that were very much relied on two years ago when the planning applications committee granted the the permission for the fence to be erected. And I just want to remind everyone now that we're talking about building on a designated green space. I mean, it's fairly, it's a fairly serious thing we're doing here. Okay, it's only a temporary structure. It's already expected to, or we're asking permission or the applicant's asking permission for it to be extended again. So, you know, temporary is quite nuanced in under those conditions. But, you know, we're talking about a park, we're talking about designated green space. So I think the bar must be set pretty high on the need in order to trump our various policies that pertain to building on green spaces. Because in Reading, we are quite dense authority, dense area, and we value our green spaces and so we should. So, you know, you've got to, we've got, you've got to not just show that the lack of this development would be an inconvenience. Because, you know, inconveniences are things we live with and things we get over. Really, you've got to show that it's an absolute necessity in order to to get over that bar. We were, we were told two years ago that almost a school would not survive without the use of this fenced off area. We were told that school couldn't operate at all. And I think some, you know, weight was given to that. And that did persuade, that formed a powerful part of the the argument made to the committee then. What we've seen in two years subsequently is that there have been times and quite significant times that the area inside the fence has not been available to the school. Now, that Karen Edwards has described the impact on the school, but the school didn't pack up and go home. And that was the level of seriousness that we were kind of told would would occur a couple of years ago. So there have been, there were other arrangements made, for example, So there have been, there were other arrangements made, for example, use of the other areas. We've talked about use of the hard, the tarmac hard standing next to the play park and the use of the tennis courts over in Christchurch Meadow. And we can talk about which was games, which was playtime, which were year groups. But arrangements were made between those different factors. So, and the school survived. Other schools have, are very constrained in their site and they make those kind of arrangements. This is not something completely unprecedented. Okay, so that's my first point. The second one was that there was quite a lot of weight put on the fact that the loss of amenity to the public was constrained to school hours and wouldn't be outside school hours, wouldn't be in the evening and wouldn't be in school holidays and weekends. The school, the park, we were told, would be fully available during those times. And I think that was, that was, that was quite a powerful persuasive point. It's turned out in the two years subsequently, we have seen that actually the, there has been quite a significant loss of amenity because of this development now. The weather played its part, but the rest of the park outside of the fence was usable during the time when the inside of the fence had been churned up so much by overuse and a combination of overuse and the weather that it couldn't be used. No one, no members of the public were going in there. That's not the only reason they weren't going in there. They were also going in there because it's a fence, there's a fence around it and it's a barrier. It's a, it's a psychological barrier, it's a physical barrier as well, but it's, it's this physical barrier with a gate. But it's, it's something that deters people from using it. So what we've seen is that actually, in reality, there has been a lot of amenity of that park. And that's, that's kind of quite a serious thing for us to consider. And we can only expect that to continue for the next year if permission were granted. I, I remind you that we're, we're not talking about, Karen, we're not talking about not having the children have outdoor space at all. The park is there, that is there to be used. Nobody is saying the, the school cannot use Westfield Road Park. All we are talking about is a use of an area exclusively. So we're not talking about hemming the children in, indoors, keeping them in, they're not allowed out, et cetera, et cetera. This, this space is available. It is more, it is more difficult for the school to manage without a fence, I grant that. Does it reach the bar of us having to build on green space? I'm not sure. And that's something, I would say it doesn't, and that's something you have to decide. The third and my final area to talk about is about the time issue. I think it was Sharon McCall, was it, who said, we remain on program? That's quite, quite a statement considering we're talking about another year extension. If we were on program, then what would we possibly need an extension for? I don't think that can be, that we can, we can accept that. But it was stressed at the time of the, the permission was granted two years ago. Again, the temporary nature, the two-year lifespan of this development was emphasized. And I think the applicant relied on that to get permission granted then. Some people were skeptical about that, but we were told two years, it will be gone as soon as possible. Now, no one can kind of foresee COVID-19, that that's accepted. But I think the fact that someone, I think from the DFE, mentioned about the ground conditions being a big influence on the delay of the project indicates that, you know, ground conditions are unknown. You can't make predictions based on when you have huge unknown factors that can really throw you off schedule. And that, that tells me that they were, you know, over optimistic about the two-year, the two-year period they wanted. And that was conveniently optimistic because it enabled the planning application to be passed, to get through. It was a powerful persuasive argument. It would only be two years. In fact, it was two years with absolute fair wind and everything going in the right direction. There was, there was quite a risk on that prediction, I think. And that risk has, has come about. Is there a risk on the one year now? I, I don't know. You have to ask yourselves that. Yes, if I've been up to, maybe during playing fields a number of times, and obviously there is progress to be seen there. So we can see that, that the, there is, there is a frame going up there as groundwork's done and it is proceeding. But, you know, are we talking about another year based on very optimistic predictions like we were two years ago? I don't know. You'll have to make that judgment. And my final point really is, is just a follow-up from councillor Rowland's question when she asked about what the school was going to do to engage with residents. Now, I understand it's difficult, I understand there's been bad feeling on all sides at this. But the head's answer was, seemed to be that the school was undertaking some community activities. They were basically unilateral community activities. None of them were in conjunction with residents. So I think it would be really a good idea for, to have some sort of proactive engagement with residents. And if you're going to do things like litter picks, invite some local people along, just have meetings with some local people and discuss. That, you know, notwithstanding the difficulties because of things like this, that, that the relationship that, where we have got to. There has to be efforts, there has to be efforts on both sides. But the school really has a duty for the final year of its being on this location, hopefully, to try and build some bridges. So in summary, I would ask you please to not grant this extension for all those reasons I've, I've just mentioned above. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we can't ask you any questions. So I'll ask you to mute yourself.
Fortunately for me.
Well, that'll do. And we'll move to our debate. I'm going to call councillor Josh Williams first, as we have no ward councillor speaking. I'm calling councillors in the order in which they have indicated they wish to speak. Councillor Josh Williams.
Very much, Chair. I know there's been an amount of time spent on this already, so I'll try to be as brief as I can. And thank you to everyone who's spoken, objectors and applicants, and the ward councillors spoke very eloquently on this. I know the officer introduced both items, but I'm going to speak on item eight, which is the fence. For my brief portion. I think it's fair to say that I agree with, with a couple of the people who've already spoken. I don't think, having viewed the webcast back, there's no way the committee would have voted for the original application had it not been temporary in nature. It was stressed as being temporary by every councillor who spoke. One of the councillors who spoke on committee stressed it five or six times just within their brief speech. And is it still temporary, I think is a fair question. The Environment Agency obviously had that question too, although they've been persuaded now that it is just for another 12 months. Obviously, the ward councillors and residents are concerned that it, yeah. When does temporary become permanent? So back in 2018, there was one councillor who voted against the application. I'm sure he had really good reasons because it was me. So I think key to my vote was exactly what councillor Davis has been talking about, which was the demonstration for the need for this annexation of the park. So if there was demonstrated need, then I think we would have to defer to that need and allow the application. Because I think the national guidance is strong on this. If educational need is demonstrated, then it becomes paramount in the planning. So I've given this a lot of thought, Chair, and I think, and I've reviewed the documents more than once. And if I'm honest, I'm still very unclear that that need has been shown. I'm unclear that all practical alternatives have been shown to be unworkable. But I recognize there are 350 children there with little secure outdoor space on site if the fence was removed. So I'm going to confuse myself slightly here, Chair. But in an ordinary world, I think I would have come to the same conclusion as I did two years ago. And I would be voting to refuse this. But I'm worried that we're not in an ordinary world anymore. And I'm acutely aware that COVID is still in the community. Safe outdoor space is not just a nice thing to have for children anymore. It could be that over the next 12 months, safe outdoor space is actually an essential tool for, for fighting against COVID-19. So I need to admit to the committee something I don't normally admit, and that is I'm torn on this application. So despite all that's been said, I don't believe we have the evidence to support the need for the school. I don't believe we had it two years ago, and I don't believe we have it now. But I'm concerned as to whether I should support this application for a year's extension in order to provide some outdoor space within which to safely social distance and play. So before I make up my mind, I can see that there's maybe four more councillors in line to speak. So before I make up my mind, Chair, I'm really keen to hear what other members have to say on this. So thank you very much for allowing me some time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Councillor Joe Lovelock, please address the committee.
Thank you, Chair. I wasn't a member of the committee two years ago, but I do remember the discussion going on for weeks on end about the need for this fence, where it should be and all the rest of it. And in an ideal world, I think we would have had a differently shaped solution then. But we are where we are. And I think everybody feels between a rock and a hard place on this, including particularly the school, I should think, who must be very fed up that they are going to be crammed into this temporary accommodation for another year, that they've got very inadequate outside space, some of which may not be very usable if the weather is as bad as it was last winter. But I do think we have a duty of care to the pupils who are going to be going to that school. And as councillor Williams has just said, COVID-19 has to be a factor in this decision because the school must have somewhere that it can particularly take those young people who've got additional needs, but also the wider school population as well. So my very, I've come to the conclusion, listening tonight and reading everything that's been sent to us, that we do have to grant the extension for a year. I know that's not going to be popular with local residents, but I'd ask them to bear in mind that at least now, the Heitz Permanent Building is visibly rising from the ground. We could go on and on about why it took the DFE so long to get it going, why the ground conditions weren't known about in advance. And, you know, we have issues on every site where we build a school. And as councillor Ennis said earlier on, we've managed as a council to build schools in the time we said we would, even though there have been complications that have been found along the way. But leave that to one side. At least now, people can see that it's actually going to happen, whereas two years ago, there was nothing to see and no certainty it was even going to start. So some progress has been made and it does look as though the school will be finished towards the end of the next academic year. So I will be supporting the recommendation this evening. But I would also, while I'm speaking, Chair, ask whether we could look to strengthen condition number one. Because it says at the end of that, that the site should be left in a clean and tidy condition. Well, what does that mean? It could mean a whole range of things. I think what we need to be saying is it must be restored properly so it can be used as parkland. And I, I think it was the objection earlier on who was concerned that might take many weeks, if not months, to secure. So as soon as there is a moving date for the school, they need to have a plan that's been approved well in advance to actually bring that land back into proper parkland use and that satisfies our officers and members, that it's actually, and the public, that it's actually going to be a usable site again. So I would ask that that is, that first condition is strengthened. But other than that, Chair, I, I have come to the conclusion we have to support this application. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lovelock. Councillor Rowland, please address the committee.
Thank you, Chair, excuse me. This is, I'm glad that councillor Williams, in a large, large measure, spoke my mind. This is a very, very difficult situation in which there are no happy endings, as I see it, no happy players. Certainly not as it stands right now. Were we were to, were we to be able to remove the fence, I think that we would probably have some happy people. But, but at that, I think the damage has been done. Two years of, of this fence has caused damage on, on what is supposed to be open space. Now, in my capacity as lead member, I, I went to observe the recreation area with, with residents and my, my lead officer for parks. And I, what I saw was really actually quite horrifying. And I was on the committee two years ago that, that did approve the fence going up. I was also not a lead member for parks at that time. And I don't think I really understood what, how important parkland is to residents. What I observed when I went out there and what I had hoped that each, each member of the committee was able to actually go out and take a look at the condition of the recreation ground is not, was not very good. The, the fence is obviously in a triangle. There are two major fence gates into that. And one of them comes from the school out into that, that triangular area. Now, when it gets to be a little bit wet and muddy, and I'm going to try to paint a picture for everyone here, the kids automatically go back out and over it. And before long, the mud spreads all out to the whole entire ground there. And also it becomes so slippery that they can't get the kids through that one fence. So what do they do? They take the kids clear around, clear around the perimeter, out to the other fence. So now we have a mud-like track all the way out and out to the other fence. And the same thing happens. The mud, the mud, the mud, the back and forth with the little ones and all of that tracked into the triangular area. And we have a slippery area where children cannot go in and out. And therefore, that entire area becomes unusable. In section 6.14, we talk about the fact that the renovation or restoration of the area, and this is what has been estimated by our, our parks manager, cannot really be done while the public, while, while the school is using it. So in other words, it couldn't really be easily reseeded because we've got kids playing games and we've got groups and everything out there. And so, so this condition has deteriorated over two years. We're not able to fix it. And we're now, and it's in a dismal state. So we're going to possibly, if we are to allow this, have it for another year in an even worse state. The situation is also, and we discussed, and I think councillor Davis said this very well, the fence around there is a fence. It says, no matter what, don't go, you aren't welcome. Even if they know, even if residents know they're welcome, they don't feel welcome. And therefore, we actually, with the, with the Parks Department, hung signs up, actually not all that long ago, to say you are welcome. Because the other thing that we are obliged to do in providing outdoor space, especially during COVID-19 here, is to ensure that as much of that open and parkland space is available for residents. So we work very hard. We have been working double hard to try to make sure that our parks are accessible for as many as possible. And yet, there we are, we've got a beautiful park there that residents love and a good fat huge chunk of it that they don't feel welcome to use, even when you hang up the signs and, I don't know, we could have stuck anything in there and they wouldn't really have gone in. And there have been pictures where they will sit down there and kind of crowd outside of it. So we have an unusable area. Were we to continue this on for another year in the middle of COVID-19, we still have an unusable area or an unwelcoming area for the residents. However, I come to the fact that COVID-19 has happened. I think if COVID-19 had not happened, I would have had no problem sitting down there and agreeing with councillor Davis on the fact that this fence absolutely, I think, could come down. I think that the, the school absolutely could be able to work without the fence and to, and to deal with, with adjustments of their, of their classrooms there. I would be taking a very, very serious, hard look at it. However, Karen Edwards has described to me here the additional difficulties that the school is going to have to go under in breaking up into smaller bubbles and things like this and having and having to, having to make sure that they are all in safe spaces. She's described how she's broken out the triangle area into three spaces where they've got to control children. I'm not a mother. I cannot imagine the horrors of all of this coordination that they're having to go through to keep kids separate. I do know it doesn't look very easy at all. And I have to commend the school for what they've done so far. Even so far, they aren't back with the 358 students they're due to have this autumn. So that is what leads me to sit down there and say that because of this situation, the school is doing everything it can. It does not want to be there, and it has got to, it's got to deal with COVID-19. Now, outside that triangle, the residents have to deal with COVID-19 too. They're in a less crowded park because they will not, they don't really inhabit that triangle, no matter what we do. So they're crowded up. So what do they do? So we've got another situation where social distancing is a bit amok. The one thing that I can see, and this unfortunately puts on the residents yet again, is that they can go over to Christchurch Meadows easily enough to get over there. Now, that's asking them to do what we are not supposed, they do not have to do, they shouldn't have to do. And it is a big imposition. So if we are to do that this year, we're asking even more of a school that I want to say has been put upon and put upon. I know it's not a planning condition, but when I asked the school, and when I asked the DFE what you would like to say to the residents, it's not your place to apologise. You've also been put upon. Your school isn't ready and everything else. But this has been a two-year experiment that hasn't really worked. The residents are unhappy. The school is unhappy. And I guess I wanted to see more come across from the school, and I think councillor Davis put it very well, that he would like to see those kind of events try to happen. It may not be easy. The damage may already be there. But I think that's one thing. And also, as councillor Lovelock said, in condition number one, to try to, and I believe it's condition number one right, that all fence and gateings could come down. If this is ready to go, and the school is able to vacate on May 1, or June 1, or whatever time they feel that they can get out, the fencing should come down immediately. It is going to take long enough to repair it. And I would like to see that. But I would also like to see something, something done. And it's not a planning condition, but something done, a tree planted, some thank you sign, some something. Because these residents have really been put upon. And I have to say that when I met with the residents, I know that there have been comments, that some of the residents have been vocal and have been emotional about this. Well, you know what? They were the most well-mannered, mature, passionate people about their space. And I was really honoured, and I was really impressed with the way that they presented their case very evenly, discussed the impact of the school. And so I have to commend them. I think they're wonderful residents. I think that they, they have defended what should rightfully be there very well and very maturely. And I also thank the school too, for the efforts, and Karen Edwards especially, for sometimes going that extra mile to explain to me how the school is having problems functioning. So unfortunately, as much as I would like and just dearly love that park to be removed of that fence, I think I'm going to have to agree with councillor Lovelock. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Rowland, I'm now going to call councillor John Ennis. Please address the committee.
Yep, thank you. I'm trying not to take your time. I think councillor Williams, you've asked for, you know, question, I think you've raised some really important points about a defined need, 350 children. I believe there is a defined need, particularly, as you rightly said, the situation with COVID. I would support this whilst understanding the situation with, which councillor Rowland has made, the situation with the local community. It's not really their school. They were asked two, three years ago, a few years ago now, to accommodate the school for all sorts of reasons. As a temporary measure, most of the children go, come to the school are not from that area because that area was well covered with schools. And it must be difficult for them. But at the same time, I believe firmly, we have to accept this, agree this planning. There's been no objections on pure planning grounds. But it really is to support the school through its last period in that area. I do want to say firstly, though, as the ex-lead councillor for education, I can remember all the arguments we had, and it was extremely difficult. And I think we need to reflect on that. And maybe after everything gets there, we need to reflect north of the river, why it's so difficult to build a school in an area of great need, where everywhere else in Reading, it wasn't that serious. And we're talking primary school children here, by the way, you know, little ones from five to 11, who I think need that space. You know, at the same time when I was lead councillor, we had difficulties in the northwest of Reading, in the northwest Caversham. Civitas was built on a park, on next to a parkland, off Great Nonne Street. It's three years, or two or three years now. Maiden Early was built on land, and you know that yourself, councillor Williams, the issues. But of course, the Green Party itself supported that school, known full well, the needs of education. And we had our issues there, but we got through that. And, you know, I really want to reflect on that. As, you know, we can blame the council. I know nobody's done that. Well, councillor Devine is yet to speak, I must admit. But at the moment, nobody's done that because the council have been able to build schools in other parts of Reading and not had this difficulty. And I think, I think testament to the school, to be frank with you, you know, I mean, Dan's still around, Karen, the head teacher, you know, getting outstanding status despite all this situation and problems that they faced. That's resilience with a capital R. And I think it's brilliant. And listening to the DFE, always against DFEs interfering, I wouldn't use the word interfering, but I suppose as a politician, we would use that word, in localisation of schools and education, not interfering, but buildings, that, you know, locally would have been a better way forward. But we are, we are where we are. And it must be difficult for them to do that all over the country. But the school has done a great job, is doing a great job. And finally, let's hope it can get there. And in the meantime, I would accept the reasoning behind why we need to do what we're doing as a planning authority with using part of the park. The condition I would like to see them is put that park back, the DFE contribute to funding to put that park back to its former status, its former glory, you know, and the points about COVID are well made. So I am supporting this whilst understanding the frustrations of the local residents. And I wish the school, I wish the DFE well, but I also wish the school well. Hopefully, we'll be able to see you in your rightful place in northwest Caversham. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And now I'll call councillor Devine, if you wish to speak to this item.
Thank you, Chair. Well, like other councillors have already spoken this evening, I am pulled in both directions. It is really a terrible choice. I think the educational needs of that school for a play area are probably the biggest influence on my decision. And I think despite the fact that it's a muddy patch, that for months of the year can't be used at all, it is still a valuable asset for the school for the remainder of the year. And if it is such a muddy patch, then the residents won't have a use of it for several months while it is actually repaired anyway. So I am inclined to vote for extension, extending the planning permission. But one thing I would say, that if I'm here in 12 months' time, and this same situation comes back, I will not be very sympathetic to the school. And they should understand that, and that their building plans must be finished by September next year. The school must be handed over and ready for action by September next year. And we should stress that point. I realise it's an imposition on local residents. They've spoken very sincerely, and I applaud them for making their case. But I am going to have to bow, I think, to the educational prerogative of using that land, or that section of land for the school where possible. So with a heavy heart, I'm afraid, I am going to support extending the planning permission for the buildings and for the, and for the land for another 12 months. But as I said, if we are faced with the same situation in 12 months' time, I will not be sympathetic at all.
Thank you. Thank you. I have no further councillors currently indicating to their wish to speak on this item. In which case, I'll speak. I'm in a similar place to most other councillors, but this is far from my day. And in a better place, we wouldn't be asked to make this decision. We're not there. We have to accept the world in which we live, which is to provide a decision on competing interests for the use of this site. I've seen nothing material that would affect the balance for an extension. The balance in favour of removing the extension, in which case I'll be endorsing the officer recommendation to extend with some reassurance on how the site will be reinstated. In which case, I will now defer to the case officer, if he wishes to speak.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify in response to councillor Lovelock's question about condition one, and making sure that's strong in terms of the state the site is left in. So there is condition six on the recommendation box as well, which is seeking a full reinstatement scheme to be submitted and agreed by officers. So that, you know, once that's submitted, that will give us a chance to review it in detail. It can be reviewed by Parks, it can be reviewed by the tree officer, to make sure it is of a good standard. We can add a note in to require that to be circulated to ward councillors when that's submitted. And in addition to that, for extra kind of security, we can amend the wording of condition one to require that this site is left in the condition referred to within condition six and the reinstatement plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, do we have anyone else that wishes to speak on this debate? Then I shall propose that we move to a vote to accept the officer recommendations as written, with some amendment made to condition one along the lines as described. The exact wording to be confirmed at a suitable later point. Councillors, are we in agreement with that course of action? Thank you. For the record, could someone please second me in the proposal I've now read?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Devine, just for procedural. I'm now going to call councillors in alphabetical order to please indicate if they vote for the recommendation, against the recommendation, or to abstain. We're only taking the first item at this point, which is the thing that we've all talked about, particularly the outdoor space. This is the vote for agenda item eight. Councillor Devine?
Recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Devine. Councillor Ennis?
Yeah, for the recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Lovelock?
For the recommendation.
Councillor McEwan?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Robinson?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Rowland?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Stamford-Bale?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Josh Williams?
Regrettably, Chair, for.
Councillor Rose Williams? Councillor Rose Williams, are you available?
Yes, for the recommendation. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, good. Okay.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Your vote is recorded.
Thank you.
I will also vote for the recommendation, and that is unanimous. The application is granted as recommended, with some wording to be adjusted on item one. We're now going to ask officers if they wish to have any comments on agenda item nine, which is the extension of the school's temporary permission. Do we have any officer comments? I know that was summarised in your introduction.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I introduced both items together, and nothing further to add.
Thank you. Councillors, we're now discussing agenda item eight, agenda item nine. Does any councillor wish to address this item? Thank you. Then I propose we move straight to the vote on agenda item nine as printed. I will propose that vote, and could councillor Devine please indicate that he will second me, or someone else, please?
No problem.
Thank you, for procedure. And councillor Devine, I will call upon you first to vote for, against, or abstain.
For the recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Devine. Councillor Ennis?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Lovelock?
For the recommendation.
Councillor McEwan?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Robinson?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Rowland?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Stamford-Bale?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Josh Williams?
Oh.
Councillor Rose Williams?
For the recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Rose Williams, thank you. I will also vote for this application as printed, and that is now unanimous. Thank you. The application is granted as recommended. We are now going to move to the next item on our agenda. This application is item 10 in the agenda, application reference 200742. Please, councillors, turn to page 65 of the agenda pack. For any of the speakers in the previous items, I'd like you, to thank you for your attendance at this committee. And we will now move forward. And I will call on officer to please present this item.
Thank you, Chair. It's Julie Williams presenting this item for you tonight. So this application, as well as being a Regulation Three type application, as it's submitted by Reading by a council, it's also a section 73 of variation application, seeking permission to make changes to previously approved plans. The original application, reference 182031, was approved by committee for a two-storey, three-bedroom dwelling on land adjacent to Byer Macado Way. It is now proposed to change the floor plans to meet the adopted policy H5, nationally described space standard. nationally described space standards for increase by increasing the internal floor area. It was noted by officers that the parking arrangements had also been changed on the first set of new plans received, but this has since reverted to as originally approved back in 2018. And this is clarified for you in the update pack. Slide one shows originally approved plans. Slide two shows the currently proposed plans. The 2018 application was approved prior to adoption of the Reading Borough Plan 2019. And when dealing with a variation application, the decision must be based on the current adopted local plan. So there is now a requirement for a SAP assessment, so the previously applied BRIAM condition will be superseded by a policy compliant SAP water efficiency condition. The report also confirms that the new house with the increasing plot coverage will still comply with current relevant policies. The report also explains that the previous plan obligation securing the use of the property as affordable housing will be rolled over and will apply to the scheme if approved. So with that, officers consider that the proposed amended development remains acceptable, still complies with the relevant local plan policies, and the recommendation is to grant as set out in the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor John Ennis, please address the committee.
Well, I have declared interest as lead councillor for housing. I want to speak in favor of this and then I will abstain for transparency. It's quite straightforward. I hope it's not too controversial. It's improving the standards of the accommodation, the affordable housing, and yet another affordable housing number, small number, but to come on board for people at Reading. So I am speaking in favor and then I will abstain. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ennis. Do any further councillors wish to speak? Thank you. In which case, I propose that we accept this application as printed. Councillor Ennis, for form, can you please second the motion?
Can I?
Yes, please.
I can. Okay.
Just a procedural matter. Thank you. I'm now going to call on councillors to vote for this item, either for, against, or abstain on the, for the grant as printed. Councillor Devine?
Recommendation.
Councillor Ennis?
Abstain.
Councillor Love Lock?
For the recommendation.
Councillor McEwan?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Robinson?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Rowland?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Stamford-Bale?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Josh Williams?
For.
Councillor Rose Williams?
For.
Thank you. I will also vote for this. It is unanimous and the application is granted as recommended. Don't know. Anyway, the next application is item 11 in the agenda, application reference 200757. Please can councillors turn to page 71 of the agenda pack. I will now call on Richard Etoff to introduce the application.
Thank you, Chair. I'll I'll be doing this item for the case officer Natalie Weeks. Chair, just before we move on, I just noticed the question in the chat there on the on the last item. I don't know if you've seen it.
I have seen it, but for raising a motion doesn't prefigure voting. And legal has confirmed also in the chat.
I can see that. Yeah, thanks. All right. We'll we'll move on. The the last application is a regulation three application. It's for the erection of a single-story side extension to the to an end-of-terrace property, Reading Borough Council application. So it's a lean-to extension. All proposed materials are proposed to match the existing house. No objections have been received. Transport of no objections, subject to conditions. The office of recommendation is therefore to grant planning permissions subject to the recommended conditions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis, would you wish to speak on this item?
Yeah, I just want to say that I thought that was an issue too, but that's fine. We've got the legal answer to that, so that's good on the previous. Yes, I want to declare an interest, speak in favor and then abstain. Again, it's another straightforward, I would like to think straightforward application by Reading Borough Council on housing to improve one of the properties by the council. So I wish to support it, but we'll vote to abstain. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ennis. Do any other councillors wish to speak? Okay, so just for clarity, raising a motion is merely asking for something to be voted upon. And asking for a secondder is merely to have the support of committee that a vote should be raised. It does not prefigure what that vote is. And as the proposer, I'm always entitled to vote against what I have proposed.
Never in question, never in question, Chair.
Just making it clear for the record and so forth. I'm now going to propose that we vote to accept the proposal as with the recommendations as printed. Councillor Ennis, for the form, can you please second me? Thank you. That's agreed.
Pleasure.
And we'll now move to the vote. Councillor Devine, will you vote for, against, or abstain?
For the recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
Abstain.
Councillor Love Lock?
For.
Councillor Robinson?
For the recommendation, but you just missed councillor McEwan.
Ah, not on my printed list. Apologies. You're very sharp. Councillor McEwan?
For the recommendation.
Thank you. And thank you also councillor Robinson. Councillor Rowland?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Stamford-Bale?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Josh Williams?
For.
And councillor Rose Williams?
For the recommendation.
I'm also going to vote for the recommendation. The application is granted as recommended. That now concludes tonight's meeting. I'd like to thank you and I'll put on record that the unusual length of our debate on agenda item eight reflects upon the seriousness of the matter. And I'd like to thank everyone for taking part. Thank you all and enjoy your evening. We will reconvene on the 12th of August.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair.
Good night.